Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Waukesha. We are called to order. This is a public hearing. It is a joint meeting of the Town of Waukesha and the Town of McQuanigo Town Boards. It's October 8th, 2019, Thursday. We're beginning at 6:30 PM. And if you would all kindly rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to do a roll call first. The Town of Waukesha, roll call by Administrator and Clerk Treasurer Nicholas.
Supervisor Stigler.
Here.
Supervisor Raggy.
Here.
Supervisor German.
Here.
Supervisor Dur.
Here.
Chairman Fisher.
Here. And then, please, the Town of McQuanigo. The roll call by the Administrator and Clerk Treasurer Carlowitz, please.
Chairman Tapsheski.
Here.
Supervisor Boucher.
Here.
Supervisor Klebo.
Yes.
Supervisor Rasman.
Here.
Supervisor Yurkey.
Here.
Thank you very much. We need to confirm compliance with the open meeting laws. Our agenda is, the notice was published on September 17th, September 24th, and October 1st, 2019, in the Waukesha Freeman. The agenda was posted and distributed to all news media, requesting notification in accordance with the open meeting laws on and posted on or before October 4th, 2019. And I think we need confirmation of that, both from Administrator Clerk Treasurer Nicholas on behalf of the Town of Waukesha and Administrator Clerk Treasurer Carlowitz on behalf of the Town of McQuanigo.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. A welcome. The Town of Waukesha Town Board would like to extend a hearty welcome to those of you who are members of the Town of McQuanigo Town Board. I've been practicing in my mind to say Chairman Tapsheski. Did I get close enough? Okay. That's a success. We could just quit right now. Maybe we should do, we did an official roll call, but I think it would just be timely. Maybe we can just go around the room, starting from left to right or right to left, as others view it. Why don't you just simply introduce yourself and just tell us why you're here tonight?
Well, I'm Richard Rasman. I'm a supervisor for the Town of McQuanigo, starting in my fifth year. And I'm here to talk to the Town of Waukesha and the board of the proposed agreement.
Thank you.
And I'm Gail Yurkey, also a supervisor for the Town of McQuanigo. And our family has a bond after running township. And I've been on the board for just a few years.
I'm Lyle Boucher, supervisor and town board on the McQuanigo. Eight years. Anyway, I'm here to practice grassroots democracy.
Wonderful. And just a reminder to all, don't hesitate. Please punch in those microphones. We are on the Town of Waukesha YouTube channel tonight, so there is an audio/video recording of this. People can see it live and they can go back and look at it historically. My interruption, I apologize. Continue on.
No problem. Kay Klebo, I'm a supervisor on the town board for the Town of McQuanigo. This is my first year. So this is actually my first joint public hearing with another community. So I'm excited to be part of this. Been a resident for the town for a little over 20 years. Was born and raised in Waukesha, so, local girl.
Thank you.
Peter Tapsheski, Town Chair for the Town of McQuanigo, here for the public hearing on the joint Town of Waukesha-Town of McQuanigo agreement, which will be discussed tonight and the purpose of the public hearing.
Thank you. Didn't mean to skip you, Kathy, but I guess you were already kind of introduced?
I'm introduced. I'm fine. I'm here because the board's here.
Okay.
I'm John Macy. I'm John Macy, and I am the Town Attorney for the Town of McQuanigo and the Town of Waukesha, and assisting with facilitating the cooperative boundary agreement.
Brian Fisher, I am the Town Chairman for the Town of Waukesha. I'm also on the Plan Commission. Have been for many years. And again, delighted to be here tonight to see if we can move this cooperative agreement forward.
I'm Kathy Nicholas, the Town Administrator Clerk Treasurer.
I'm Jim Radke, Town of Waukesha, third elected term. I'm here because we've got a public hearing.
David German, Supervisor 2, first term, along with you.
Michael Dur, Supervisor number 3, since 2014.
Bob Stigler, Town of Waukesha, also supervisor. First year, been on the Plan Commission, Board of Appeals, for probably 14 years altogether, so.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll proceed forward then with reading the official notice into the record. Notice is hereby given. Please take notice that the Town Board of the Town of Waukesha and the Town Board of the Town of McQuanigo will conduct a public hearing on October 8th, 2019, beginning at 6:30 PM at the Town Hall of the Town of Waukesha, W-250 S-3567 Center Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding a proposed cooperative plan between the Town of Waukesha and Town of McQuanigo, enacted pursuant to Section 66.0307 Wisconsin statutes, which cooperative plan is proposed to be submitted to the Department of Administration for review and approval. Going forward, as we proceed, just a kind of a quick reminder to all of you in the audience. If you didn't see it on the way in, we'd like to have you sign in to acknowledge your presence. And there are, holding one up here, there are slips in the back of the room. If you would like to speak during the public hearing, we would ask that you would fill out that slip and bring it forward and give it to either Administrator Clerk Treasurer Nicholas or Attorney, excuse me, Administrator Clerk Treasurer Carlowitz before you speak. I'm going to kind of do 4A and 6B together. We're going to have, before the actual hearing begins per se, we're going to have an explanation of what a cooperative plan is and why this cooperative plan is being put forth now. Attorney Macy will address those issues. And then also the details of the cooperative plan between the Town of McQuanigo and the Town of Waukesha, and Attorney Macy as well. So if you would proceed, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you all for coming. This is your opportunity to make comments on the plan and the procedure. And so I'm going to keep my comments relatively short, but hopefully by making some brief introductory comments, it might answer some of the questions that you've come here to request answers to. So, 66.0307 is the statutory provision. We're basically under a cooperative boundary plan, under one statute. And we make that sound easy, but it's a somewhat complicated statute. And I'd welcome anybody, it's easily accessible. I'd welcome anybody who wants to walk through it. It sets forth procedures and purpose and things like that. So again, it's 66.0307 is the boundary change pursuant to an approved cooperative plan. I could give a long history on how this statute came into existence and why it came into existence, but suffice it to say that it is the main way now that two municipalities can enter into a cooperative agreement, especially dealing with borders. There used to be other ways, and we have many border agreements that were under other procedures. But the legislature set off it a couple of years ago to repeal those other procedures and to rely mainly on this procedure for cooperative boundary plans. The statute clearly sets forth that the purpose of a plan, the cooperative plan shall be made with the general purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the territory covered by the plan, consistent with the comprehensive plan of each participating municipality. So in the plan, under the purpose, the municipalities that propose to set the boundary lines between themselves under this section shall prepare a cooperative boundary plan. The procedure is, first, it initiates by authorizing resolutions by both of the municipalities. Both of the town boards adopted resolutions, which started the process. And within five days after those resolutions were adopted, they were required to mail out copies of those resolutions to myriad of entities, and that was all done. The next step in the process is the public hearing. There is a draft document that was available to the public for their review, and I'll talk about that next. And the public hearing has to be scheduled within a very specific period of time. And it's for the participating municipalities to hold a joint hearing on the proposed plan. And again, specific notice, as was referenced on the agenda and by the Chairman, had to be given of this public hearing. The next step in the process is very important because any person may comment on the plan during the hearing and may submit written comments before, at, or within 20 days following the hearing. All comments shall be considered by each participating municipality. And other entities can also comment on it. But it's key, very key, that in the record, each of the municipalities carefully reviews all of the comments and takes them into consideration. Once that's done, each of the municipalities can adopt a final plan. There is the potentiality of an advisory referendum. It is not contemplated in this situation to have an advisory referendum for reasons that'll become apparent when I walk through the plan. And then, once the time, other time limits are met, then each of the plan participants may submit the final version of the cooperative plan to the Department for Approval. And then there's a procedure that the state goes through to review the plan, potentially hold another public hearing if needed, and then ultimately comment on the plan. They can approve the plan, they can deny the plan, or they can send the, remand the plan back for further consideration by the municipalities. So that's basically the procedure of the cooperative plan and the purpose of the cooperative plan. And the next question is, why now? And for the public's information, the legislature, a couple of years ago, in order to incorporate in the state of Wisconsin, a town must meet very specific requirements. And many of the towns, including the two here tonight, had looked at those requirements over the years and had found that they didn't meet the requirements under the standard incorporation process. But the legislature decided, a couple of years ago, to create two alternate processes for the potentiality of incorporation. And it has been determined that the Town of Waukesha potentially can meet the eight requirements. And if they meet a certain eight requirements by the end of June of next year, would have the possibility of incorporating. So the why now is because if they meet the eight requirements and they incorporate, they have protected their borders and will become, in all likelihood, a village. There's no reason to become a city status, but become a village. But that's another procedure, and we'll be talking about that procedure, and there'll be other things that happen. But the why now is because if the Town of Waukesha was successful in incorporating, they wanted to reach out to their neighboring municipalities, like the Town of McQuanigo, and say, "We're willing to enter into a boundary agreement with you" so that, to say that we will not annex property from the Town of McQuanigo, even if we incorporate into a village. And so, it might be a great segue now, unless there's questions on the procedure, to get to the plan itself, because it sort of flows directly from that.
Proceed.
So, again, that 66.0307, boundary change pursuant to an approved cooperative plan, it is the procedure in the state of Wisconsin that's currently being used. So there is a draft plan, that, as I said, was available. And the next agenda item asks me to walk you through that plan. And there are certain key aspects to the plan, and I'm going to concentrate on those and not to the boilerplate and things like that. Although, the purpose, again, is intended to achieve the general purposes as set forth in the statute, guide and accomplish a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the territory covered by the plan. And I should indicate that the area covered by the plan is both towns. The entire sections of both towns are the area under the plan. So they're fixing the boundaries between McQuanigo and Waukesha to remain as they are now. There would be no property coming from McQuanigo and going to Waukesha, or from Waukesha to go to McQuanigo, under this plan. To assure orderly development by establishing the joint planning area set forth in Section 5, and to increase governmental efficiencies through the sharing of services that's been provided separately by McQuanigo and Waukesha, and to eliminate duplicate or unnecessary expenditures. I've already indicated, under Section 4, is existing boundaries. The existing common boundary line between McQuanigo and Waukesha, as of the effective date of this plan, as described on Exhibits A and B, shall remain the boundary line between McQuanigo and Waukesha for the planning period. And I'll get to the planning. The existing boundary may not be changed during the boundary period. There shall be no conditions under which the boundary may occur, change may occur. No schedule or period time which a boundary change shall or may occur. Adequate provision is made for the delivery of necessary municipal services to the territory covered by the plan, as the boundaries remain the same. But municipal services shall be provided as described in Sections 5 and 6 below. The highways within the territories covered by the plan include State Trunk Highways 18, 164, 59, 190, and Interstate 94. The services to be provided to the territory covered by this plan, the providers of the services and approval of the relevant governmental regulatory authority is described in Sections 5 and 6 below. The schedule for delivery of services described in Sections 5 and 6 below, the schedule for delivery is adequate to serve the territory covered by the plan because it allows additional options for services which exceed the options that would otherwise be provided and would allow for orderly redevelopment. There are no boundary changes contemplated by this agreement, so neither Waukesha nor McQuanigo are hereby authorized to adopt a boundary change ordinance per Section 66.0307 Sub 10 Wisconsin statutes. The cooperative plan is fully consistent with current state and federal laws, county shoreline zoning ordinance, municipal regulations, and administrative rules that apply to the territory affected by the plan. The planning period is described in Section 9 below. And there are no agreements made regarding zoning in town territory pursuant to Section 66.0307 7M, as this is an agreement between towns. So, why did I read those to you? You all can read. But I read those to you because that's what the state statute requires the plan to deal with and comment on. And so we're meeting the statutory requirements by commenting on those sections. Section 5 deals with consistency with comprehensive plans. It's a requirement of the state statute that any such comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, any boundary agreement is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it is, in this instance, a part of it. The joint planning area, there is contemplated to be a joint planning area, which is different than the planning area of the two agreements, which is all of both towns. And that's as set forth on the map on the wall. And the joint planning area is, has a joint planning committee made up of two members from Waukesha and two members from McQuanigo. And what it basically deals with is if development along that boundary line would be, go to the joint planning committee for the sole purpose of making advisory decisions to the other municipality when certain development would occur in that area. And it's just along the boundary, that's very typical of a cooperative boundary plan, that if someone was going to, for instance, one municipality decided to do something that was not consistent with the other municipality's plans for that area, so that there wouldn't be, you know, harmonious development between the two communities, this committee would talk that out. It's merely advisory, though, and it merely makes recommendations to the other municipalities. So we see this in communities where it's the gateway to a community, and they say, "We understand that that's going to stay in your community, but it looks like it's part of our community, and so we think we should talk about what could go on in that area." But this is a merely advisory. The second major section, or third, or the next major section, I should say, is Shared Services Committee. And that's a committee made up, again, of two members of each of the municipalities, with non-voting members of the administrators and clerk. And they're in a formal advisory body to talk about what savings might occur if the communities talked about having some form of shared services. Now, every community in the state of Wisconsin's been talking for years about the potentiality of saving money, especially with the levy restraints that we live under. And that way of doing that, of course, is by looking at any possible savings that might occur by having shared services, and that's the purpose of that committee. The last major section deals with dispute resolution. You couldn't have a cooperative boundary plan without having a way to deal if there are disagreements. And then, there is no division of assets and liabilities, another thing that needs to be commented on because there's no adjustment of land being made. And the last thing is the planning period. And the state statute allows 10 years for a planning period. And with the department's permission, the planning period can be indefinite. And this agreement contemplates that it would be in perpetuity. And they're requesting the state to approve agreement that would be in perpetuity. So, that's the major concepts in the plan. And unless there's any questions of any of the town board members or the chairman, I would say, Mr. Chairman, we might want to open it up to public hearing at this time.
Okay, seeing none, then, I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. And in moments, we will take public comments. We have one other thing on the agenda, and that's a review of the timeline for the cooperative plan. Do you have anything further to add to that, Administrator Nicholas, or not?
I do not. Attorney Macy reviewed it.
Okay, so that's been sufficiently covered. So the public hearing is open. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward to the microphone in the center of the room there. And as you come forward, if you've got one of those slips, we'd appreciate it if you would deposit it with one of the clerks. So please come forward if you would like to speak. And please do introduce yourself as well by name and address after you've handed in the slip. And don't be afraid of the microphone. We want to hear what you have to say.
Hi, Lori Longtime, W-271 S-3581 Oaknall Drive, Town of Waukesha. I fully support this, the protection of our borders, particularly against annexation by the, by municipalities, which seem to have more rights than others. And I think it's great that the townships are working together to establish formally what has already been established somewhat informally. I shouldn't say that exactly, but you get my drift. With a couple of caveats. First of all, and this is mostly addressed to the Town of Waukesha, but I hope there, that the ideas might be appealing to the Town of McQuanigo as well. Let's not forget that we're a town. And that, while that seems silly, this is prelude to applying for village status. And, but people moved here and lived here and continue to live here because of the quality of life that is here in our township. We have larger minimum-sized lots. We have no multifamily development, except for some things that were snuck in, somewhat shadily. No huge strip mall developments. And remain cognizant of environmental protections that are in place currently for wetlands, uplands, and environmental corridors. We, that's part of why we live here. The, you know, the openness, the quality of life, the lower taxes, frankly. Although that's not my personal primary consideration. It's a nice bonus. And, and just the fact that we are not a city. And I realize that if we apply for village status and get it, we will officially be that. But, but keep in mind why, why we moved here, why we live here in the first place. And the second caveat is, I understand that in terms of becoming a village, that there, we would be loosened from certain regulatory impositions by the county. And I would caution that every single change that we, as a town, might make, becoming a village and being freed from the, being freed from the county regulations, that each regulation, ordinance, statute, law, rule, et cetera, whatever you want to call them, that they be reviewed publicly and in a transparent way and a darn good explanation given why we're changing from the county. And I say this as I don't think that our county, in particular, has such great regulations. But they did, when they were put into place, they were put into place for certain reasons. And they had professional staff, professional people that typically town boards don't have on their board, and had them look at all these various regulations and why. There was a reason. If we're going to change it, we should have a darn good reason for changing it. And I, one thing is, in particular, is shoreline setbacks. That is very important to, what happens on the land affects the quality and the quantity of the water. And we are very fortunate in this area to have a lot of water-rich resources. But we are not looking at developing a municipal water system as, in terms of coming, becoming a village. And if we do that, we still have to, our wells and our septic systems still have to have space, excuse me, in order to, in order to function properly. So I do support this, but with the understanding that we're not just going to just, you know, cancel everything because we no longer have to comply with the county regulations. And I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who would like to speak next, please come forward. And bring your slip up, if you would, please.
I'll get it up there.
Fair enough. Name and address, please.
Gilbert Yurkey, South 79, West 28989, Frog Alley Road, Town Town of Maguano. Couple of questions and then just a comment. Generally, I'm not against this, but I do have some questions. I also serve on the planning board, so these are questions for my town board. This joint planning committee, when Attorney Macy talked about it, he said town of Waukesha and Maguano, but it also goes over to Vernon. Have they signed on to this, that they'll be part of that joint area too? So that's just a question. In our area, we happen to have at least one conditional use. So will this, what are the mechanics for this joint committee to review it? We just recently expanded that conditional use. It wasn't much more than a hobby kennel, but the point is, do we have to bring the committee together before it comes before us? And vice versa? When you guys want to do something in that joint committee, do you have to bring this planning board or this joint committee together? The second thing would be just something very blunt. What's in it for the town of Maguano? Right now, if it's a town versus town border, it's my understanding that we are equal, we can't change the border. So in a sense, by doing this, and I, like I said, I'm not trying to sink it, but by us doing this, we now give you the power to be incorporated, and thus, we actually need the border agreement to protect our border. So, other than just being a good neighbor, what's in it for the town? So, just a few of those questions.
Thank you very much. I'll take just a little bit of a quick stab at, I think, kind of the first and third question, and Attorney Macy or others may want to fill in a bit of it, as it regards the town of Vernon. The town of Waukesha has put forth a resolution. We have a draft agreement. We will be going through a similar public hearing on the 24th of October, I believe it is, in an effort to construct a cooperative boundary agreement with the town of Vernon. So looking through town of Waukesha's knothole, we're going to be doing a similar thing with the town of Vernon. And the third thing you addressed, and then I'll let Attorney Macy or somebody kind of fill in a bit of the other blanks. I think you're, I think Attorney Macy addressed it. I think your question kind of answered in it, what's in it for the town of Maguano is if this agreement is put in place in the town of Waukesha. Were successful in becoming a village, then it would preclude us from annexing property from the town of Maguano. I think that's what's in it for the town of Maguano. I think that's an accurate statement. Do you want to fill in with any of the pieces that I missed?
I would just real quick add.
Please.
Gilbert, in regards to the term, as we worked in it for the town of Maguano, we worked hard to secure our border agreements with the village of Maguano and the village of North Prairie. We have those borders secured. This is a situation now where, as explained by Attorney Macy, certain towns who meet requirements can incorporate to prevent further annexation of their properties by their surrounding incorporated municipalities. Now, if they do meet those requirements and it is approved, and they do become an incorporated municipality, then if we don't have this agreement with them, they certainly would be free to come through that border that we share with them and start annexing the town of Maguano. So what's in it for us is preservation of our borders right where they are now.
I would only add to that last comment that they're also negotiating and working with the town of Brookfield and the town of Vernon. So you say, "We need the town of Maguano," and yes, but it's also a gentle persons reaching across the divide and saying, "We want to offer this opportunity to all of our neighbors." And that, and so if the town of Maguano had said, "No, we're not interested," we could still proceed with the town of Brookfield and the town of Vernon agreements and meet the requirements, incorporate, and then the town of Maguano would be just left out there hanging. So I think this is why they've reached out to Maguano to say, "We want to, Brookfield came to us, we went to Vernon and Maguano," and to just try to treat everybody the same, to lock in the borders for everybody. So yes, you're assisting the town in their incorporation attempt by doing it, but if the town of Maguano had said no, and they had succeeded with the town of Brookfield and the town of Vernon's cooperative boundary agreements, then Maguano, your border wouldn't have been protected. So that sort of answers that question. As for joint planning, if you read the document, which I'm sure you'll get an opportunity to do, it clearly talks about certain undeveloped areas, which, when developed, will have an impact on both Waukesha and Maguano. It's the joint planning areas, how to cooperate on matters related to the comprehensive land use plan for the territories, partially or completely located. So it was going to the bigger picture items more than the detailed items. Some plans do, you know, have triggering mechanisms and things. This one looks to the big picture items and changes the comprehensive plan and things like that. And either of the Cathys can add to these, you know, there is familiar or more familiar with the plan than I am. So if either, Kathy Nicholas, have you had any comments to add to answer Mr. Yurkey's questions?
Just to fill out a little bit more, and we pretty much touched through it, but looking through the town of Waukesha knothole for the minute, and I know that's not really what drove your question, but we, at the town of Waukesha, currently have seven municipal neighbors. Two of them are cities, city of Waukesha, city of New Berlin. One of them is a village, village of Big Bend. And then there are four townships, clockwise, Brookfield, Vernon, Maguano, and Genesee. We're attempting to put in place these cooperative agreements or cooperative boundary agreements with three of the four. And Attorney Macy alluded to that. Brookfield, Vernon, and Maguano. We're not currently pursuing a similar agreement with the town of Genesee, but through our selfish knothole, if the town of Brookfield were to pursue village status and be successful, the town of Vernon were to pursue village status and be successful, and we either weren't to attempt to do that or weren't successful, then five of the seven municipalities with which we share borders would be able to annex land from the town of Waukesha. So that, if that sounds a bit serving self-interests, albeit, but that's what's behind it for us. But we want this agreement with the town of Maguano so that that border is basically locked in. Okay? Who else would like to speak? I mean, is there anybody else who wants to address those questions or pose them? I mean, you're certainly welcome to do that. Who else would like to speak? Did I, maybe I sensed something wrong. Sir, did you want to speak or no? I'm looking at you in the back corner? Okay, I read that wrong. My apologies. Anybody else who would like to speak? I want to make sure there's ample opportunity for anybody to speak. You can speak a second time if you feel a need to do so. Ask one more time if anybody would like to speak. And if no one comes forward, then we're simply left with closing this public hearing at seven oh six PM on October eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you all who attended the public hearing. We need yet to officially adjourn, adjourn, rather, the town boards. And I think, did you have one other thing you wanted to add first?
Yeah, I think, I think we should at least, for the record, acknowledge that we have received written comments from, whom did we receive written comments prior to the hearing from?
Not for this.
Not for this one at all?
None. All right. So then let it be said, we have yet to receive any written comments. Is that likewise, from the town of Maguano, you have not received any written comments either? So neither the town of Maguano nor the town of Waukesha has received any written comments at this point in time. So then I think the adjournment, and I think we will let the town of Maguano adjourn your town board first. We will follow second. But before you formally do that, again, I would like to thank you all for coming out on a beautiful evening in pursuit of this neighborly endeavor. We're grateful that you were here for your presence and your participation. So you can proceed to adjourn your town board meeting if you see fit, and we'll do likewise.
Thank you, Chairman. Do you have a town board motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And we have a second.
I'll second it.
A motion to adjourn by Supervisor Radke, seconded by Supervisor German. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. So we indeed are officially adjourned at seven oh eight PM. Thank you all very much for attending.